Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, in the name of our president, our citizens, our people, our country, and our government. Please make a stand for one of the reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
President.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Dr. Ralph Child.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Mr. Smurl.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of the council number 14 of 2024.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of council number 14 2024. This ordinance converts the 600 block of Deacon Street from one-way street to a two-way street from 625 slash 628 Deacon Street to the intersection where Sanderson Avenue. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Spence with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A correspondence dated April 24, 2024 from OCD ARPA Director regarding an American Rescue Plan Act update. 3B correspondence dated April 30, 2024 from BA ARPA Director regarding ARPA departmental budget transfers.
Are there any comments on the third order items?
Yes, I had a few comments on third order items. 3B, when it comes to department budget transfers regarding ARPA, a couple things stuck out. So we had Pittson Avenue streetscape and that Pittson Avenue streetscape is being split and the funds are being transferred to two other projects, one being Cedar Ave. Could we ask the administration, Mr. Voldenberg, what's occurring here with this transfer? Has the city found an alternative way to, you know, do this project or are we abandoning the project altogether?
I'll ask that question, sir.
Thank you. And then the next one was the transfer for Kaiser Valley flood funds. They're transferring about 49,000, I think $700 from Kaiser Valley flood funding to City Hall improvements. So if we could just get an explanation of why we're switching these flood funds over to City Hall improvements, that would be great.
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you very much. That's all.
I also raise an eyebrow to the transfer from the Kaiser Valley Hazard Mitigation over to City Hall repairs. I'd like a rationale for myself, too, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I just want to mention before we get started about the situation we had with files being left in the outside rear of the building, I believe it was last Wednesday or the week before. I spoke with the administration. They are quite aware of the situation and they are going to have a third-party investigation done on this instead of having something internal. But for right now, a few changes have been made for right now. So from now on, documents have to be shredded in your own office. Any office that doesn't have shredder will have one. And then all of the shredded material will be taken by Paul to the recycling center. That is all I have.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First.
Excuse me, Mr. President. We have some third order items from council. I don't think you asked us.
Announcements. Oh. Another announcement. Another announcement. Okay.
We didn't get an opportunity to do our announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do. So I just want to congratulate the organizers of the Office 5K that went on this past weekend. That's the group Valley in Motion. Gus Fahey, I know, was the main organizer of that event and they attracted 1,500 runners and a lot of them were from out of town. So it was a huge success. I remember the first year he did that, there were literally maybe 100, 150 runners. So it's been growing substantially and now to the point where it's starting to draw people into town from far away. So I want to congratulate them. It's a great thing for our city. Also, I know that I announced the Oakmont Park ribbon cutting. I think I said it was going to be May 10th originally. It's been moved to Thursday, May 16th at 3:00 PM at Oakmont Park and that's the new park that's been completed up on the East Mountain on the, I guess it would be the northerly side of Route 307. They did a great job on that. So other than that, I know, well, I'll do the rest in the fifth order. Thank you.
I have a couple announcements. First of all, I probably wouldn't be able to go home tonight if I didn't wish everybody a happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there and, you know, hanging their guys' Father's Day is right around the corner. And I also probably couldn't go to work tomorrow if I didn't wish everybody a happy Teachers' Appreciation Day to all the teachers out there who impact lives and make a difference every day, especially my colleagues at the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County. They are truly some of the best. Also, I was asked to announce two events coming up at the Ukrainian Club on 237 Railroad Avenue in Scranton. Saturday, May 11th, there'll be entertainment by Jack Bordeaux, Jim Cullen, and Sharon Ambrosia from 7:00 to 10:00. And then on May 18th, live side piece called the Bad Girlfriend Duo. And also, like I stated earlier, these will both be at the Ukrainian Club on Railroad Avenue. That is all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Greenhouse up at Naug Park this time of year has their plant sale going on. So I believe their hours are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and then Thursdays, 3:00 to 6:00 PM and also 9:00 to 1:00. So, you know, it's a great local place to be able to go and get some plants for the season and they've got hanging baskets. They have a lot in stock, so I just encourage people to take a look and everything goes to the Greenhouse project. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Holdewannas.
Holdewannas, Scranton. First, I'd like to mention the passing of Charles Miller. He passed away on Sunday. His obituary was in the paper today. If I recall correctly, he was a retired firefighter. He was 94 years old. The union contracts, have we had any movement on that?
A little.
Inch by inch, huh? Paragraph by paragraph?
We're getting close, Joan. We're getting really close.
Well, I put in a write-to-know-the-your copies and the 30-day extension of that request will end on May 15th, so we'll see what kind of explanation they pass on to me. However, I have heard something about the Pocket Park on the corner of Linden in Wyoming. A little birdie told me that the grand opening is set for June 7th. I think that's the first Friday of June. They're going to have a DJ and all kinds of activities and they will be adding benches and other accoutrements, so it really looked like a park. The article that was in the local paper about the resolution of the Samters Light debacle, I just found that so utterly amusing. They didn't, you know, the city retracted the issue of the violation of the ordinance, but they didn't come anywhere close to saying, "We screwed up. We apologize. Next time we'll do better," which is what I'd like to see. I live in Samters and I'm telling you, all you need to do is close your blinds and it solves that problem because I have headlights shining in my apartment at night and if I don't close my blinds, it's like daylight. You close your blinds, no problem, which brings me to the next topic. I'm still hot under the collar over the way Tom Coyne was treated last week and I think the city owes him a public written apology. They were very quick to put in writing on a demand letter, which they had hand-delivered, you know, accusing him of some kind of misconduct, okay? Telling him how to account for his actions or turning off photographs and emails and the names of the people with whom he shared those pictures. I'm one, I'm ready to turn myself in to have my brain washed. Anytime they want to know where I am, I'm at Samters. But I still am bothered about that. What the city needs is more people like Tom Coyne. Intelligent, articulate, he does his homework, he knows how to research, his bearing up at the podium is always professional and, you know, basically they spit in his face. I would say they kicked him somewhere else, but I'm a lady and I won't say that. But a public apology and a written apology is in order and I hope the administration has enough common sense to do that. Everybody makes a mistake, including the administration. The question is, how do you correct the mistake after you realize you've made one? And if they just pretend that nothing ever happened, we're all cool here, shame on them. That's not the way of leadership. And I'll tell you another thing. I don't care who put the trash out, who put the bag out, who made the mistake. The buck stops on the mayor's desk and it's up to her to right this wrong. And I'll be counting the days until she does it or until we have a new mayor. And you mentioned during the caucus about the parks and putting signs up that the parks close at dusk, okay? I'd like to have you consider something. Maybe there should be some kind of ordinance in addition to the signs and then anyone caught there after dusk should be fined. And if it's kids, sock it to their parents. You know, you need to get a handle on this kind of conduct or it'll continue all the time. It's bad enough that there are no gates at Naug Park and people are going in that gorge, especially as the weather's going to start getting hot. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Lee Morgan.
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is that, you know, I don't know how much room is at the District Justice's office for people to come in and watch this hearing that's going to be the beginning of this aspect of litigation, but it's on Tuesday, May 14th at 11:45 at 130 North Washington Avenue at District Justice Farrell's office. And I think that every Scranton resident that can come there should come. It's a status hearing, so it's the beginning. But I think that sooner or later, the residents of this city have to understand that they have to stand up for themselves because we don't have a council that can do that job and we definitely don't have a mayor that's capable. We've elected a lot of failed leadership in this city over an extended period of time and it's really hurt us. I have to say that I'm happy that most of my children left this city. I only have two more left. I'm trying to get another one of my children to leave here. I just really hope that people would understand that what you see every week at this council meeting is not leadership and what you see from this mayor is not leadership. Leadership is much different, okay? These are people that are supposed to be representing us, but they don't. And what it's been is a trajectory of failure over almost my 40 years here, like we're talking about documents in a dumpster. That's not the first time that's happened. That's happened a couple of times already, okay? There's a host of issues that come here all the time. A very large amount of the damage that's been done to this city has been done by appointments of council members when one leaves and the neighborhood groups who patronize certain people who come to them and say that they intend to do this, that, or the other thing to benefit the city. I think it's time for the residents to ask, where are all the council members who were elected in this city over the last 40 years? Where do they live now? I think that's a very important question that everybody should ask. And I think another question that should be asked is, with all the federal funds flying all over the place, how come the city's in such a desperate situation? Deterioration everywhere, population decline? You know, it's time to really ask these questions and our elected leaders can't answer these questions, but, you know, me, I'm ready to litigate over ECTV and the mayor and the council and the removal of the public access channel politically. I'm going to litigate with licensing and inspections and I don't think that District Justice Farrell likes my subpoena list and I'm prepared to defend it. And I'm just a truck driver, so I don't want anybody to think that I'm some well-versed litigation attorney. But I do think that the residents of this city need to stand up for themselves once and start cleaning house. You know, you look at the renovations taking place to this building today. They could have bought the former Store and Pfister building for $1.6 million was office space, multiple floors, ready to go. You just, you look at all the failure of this city government and over a lack of, I don't know, concern by the council members because they have a right to do investigations, but they don't. We talk about just utterly silly things, like it's not legal to be in Naug Park after dark, okay? There's a lot of things we could be doing for this city, but we're not doing it because we're all playing politics. We've elected a mayor who failed at the Scranton School District and then became mayor here. And it's happened just so many times that it's just a tragedy that we have people that don't understand the collective stupidity is killing us. Just look at the person in the White House and you'll figure it out. Thank you.
Les Spindler.
Yeah, Council Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. First off, I want to double down on what Joan said. I couldn't say it any better. Tom deserves a big apology. He could have just walked by those boxes and not have done anything and maybe people's information could have been released all over the city. So again, I agree with Joan that Tom has owed a big apology, but I know he'll never get it from this administration, so I wouldn't hold my breath. Okay, next thing. Last week, a speaker came up here and complained that the Joe Biden sign should be taken down because he's opening up our borders. Well, the fact is, President Biden several months ago sent a bill to Congress that was bipartisanly passed by Senate and Donald Trump told his sheep in the Congress not to vote for it because he's afraid it would have hurt him in the election and they listened to Trump. So the president did try to secure our borders, but Trump was against it. Next thing. The railroad bridge on Main Avenue I keep talking about, I know, a while back, I think Frank said that a letter was sent to the railroad and about putting on the side of the bridge, the height and everything, but have we heard anything else about that?
We haven't. We haven't had a response as yet, Mr. King.
What's that?
We haven't had a response.
Let's see if we could check on it, please. Thank you.
I will. I'll follow up on that and our suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Next thing. Last week when I was here, I talked about these letters I got from Berghheimer and I went on and on. I'm glad to say that the next day, my accountant's office called me and they spoke to Berghheimer and they said they're going to take me off their records. But that doesn't discount the harassment that myself and many, many other people went through in this city. There's people that got rental registration letters that don't have a rental property and Councilman Schuster's one of them. So we have a company working for us that doesn't even know what the heck they're doing and I think you people should go back, revisit that legislation you passed and rewrite it the way it was before because there were no problems with the old legislation. People weren't getting letters harassing them. So I know you people won't do it because you listen to what the mayor does, but you should revisit that legislation and do it over and help the citizens of this city. Thank you. That's all I have this week.
Mr. Spindler, the legislation that you said that we passed, the original one, the ordinance that was, it was from council number 36 of 2022. That was the original one that was done from updating it to the city's rental registration code. You said that three council people had signed that. Three approved it, the original one. And you said the three people up here had to get lawyers. So I did research it because I didn't think I was here, but I wasn't here. So the first one was passed without me being here. I have that for you. And then the second one, the updated one, that you believe only three people passed, that's incorrect also. There were five affirmative votes on that updated one and that was done in council number 82 of 2023. I have that for you, too, if you need it. Next, Roger Leonard.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Roger Leonard. I'm a 23-year employee in the Department of Public Works and the president of IAMAW Local Lodge 2305. I'm here today to share with you my concerns over actions currently being taken by certain individuals in our city government that can undermine important work being done to support economic development and result in a loss of good union jobs that help provide a living wage in our community. Last year, I was approached by city management about the creation of a new blight remediation groundskeeper classification within the Department of Public Works. This new position would have been responsible for responding to and abating instances of blight within the city, including removal of debris from vacant lots and maintenance of vacant properties. I was initially enthusiastic about this new positions because this is a much-needed service in our community and because DPW already had the skills and the equipment to perform this work. In fact, we had already been doing some of it for years, but I had some concerns about the types of work the city wanted this position to perform, which included our traditional DPW work and the conditions of employment they wanted to set, which include an extreme degree of discretion and when this work would be done. The city has wanted to move the DPW away from predictable scheduling for years and it looked like they were trying to use this new position to get a foothold in our department. And so, on behalf of our union, I pushed back. I told the city that we wanted to do this work, but that we would have to use the same scheduling that they use with the rest of the DPW workers and that this job would have to be focused on the work the city claimed it was meant to do. When I raised these concerns, instead of working with me, the city took the blight remediation positions away from the DPW. It is currently attempting to place these positions in another department under a union that primarily consists of clerical employees. I have great respect for the work that those city employees do, but it's very different from the type of work that is done by DPW. Some of it is, we operate heavy equipment, pick up garbage, cut trees, maintain roads, sewer, infrastructure, and work nonstop during snow emergencies for as long as it takes to keep our city safe. Clerical communicates with the public and maintains records. Again, no disrespect is meant, but being able to type 60 words per minute has nothing to do with the work of cleaning up blighted spaces in the city. I am concerned that by placing these positions outside of DPW, the city is setting them up to fail. I would be unfortunate, to say the least, for the city to wind up subcontracting this work out, eliminating union jobs that could provide a living wage in the city and prevent blight from happening in the first place. I am therefore asking the city council to investigate the situation and to take appropriate action to ensure that blight remediation is housed within a department that has the capacity to successfully do the work and that the work continue to be performed by the union-represented workers of the Scranton DPW. I will be back next week to respond to any comments or grievances that you may have. Thank you for your time.
All right, Rick Little.
Hi, Rick Little from Scranton. I'd like to talk about the, is it possible to get removal of the Biden sign on the ballot? What can you tell me of the procedures to do with this legislative body to put it on the ballot in November to take down the Biden signs so that people, because the people had no input and when it went up and we were told, hey, it went up for free. DPW put it up. I watched them put it up. So it seems to me they could take it down for free. I think it's very, very important because all progress starts with ideas. You have to have an idea before anything gets done and I think people got a better idea of who Joe Biden is after COVID and everything. I've been following Biden all my life and the biggest thing was being in the family court system in New York State. New York State was the first state to really kick in in 1989 with the Title IVD and the federally enforced laws like VAWA. And VAWA is really why I don't have a family, why I don't, because as soon as I got to the family court, you know, they started arresting me for talking on to my, because part of VAWA is the harassment statute, which I did manage to turn around in New York State, hasn't been turned around here, but they included things in that statute. It's, for one thing, it's called the Violence Against Women Act, but there's more violence among women partners than men. It's completely, it doesn't make sense. Just the title is unconstitutional, but this Violence Against Women Act, everything we see here, all this feminist stuff that has come up since 1966, supposedly Joe Biden wrote VAWA with national organization from women, and if you know who Andrea Dworkin is, I mean, she just hates men and she's the muse for this legislation. And it was done in about 1989. It doesn't matter what party because it was developed under Bush and it was first passed in like, I believe, 1994 by the Clintons. But this is a family destroying litigation and Joe Biden has his name on it. I really doubt he actually wrote it. I really doubt he actually wrote it, but he's been the go-to guy for legislation all his life. And everything about him is turned out to be false. So what are people supposed to see when they're walking down Spruce Street and they look up and see this Biden sign? This brown Biden sign. And the only reason it's there is because the powers-to-be are trying to, you know, impress the feds so they get more federal funding, like, and they keep getting it too. I mean, I read in the paper today that NAPA Housing Authority used to benefit from more than seventeen million in federal funding, but it also says that they never know how this money is spent. And this, and Scranton Housing Authority is a five oh one three C. Just the nature of that, as a legal entity, it should be audited. We should know where, who's living in there, who's working there, who's being addicted and who's being brought in there. Because I promise you that hundreds of people, this is a sanctuary city. That's what it is. They're bringing people in and they're housing these people, especially, and they're giving them jobs at Matt Cartwright's office. And they're removing people that, like me, that are much more qualified to live there and the people that run it. My time's up, but I need to know how to get it on the ballot for to remove the Biden sign. Because I'm sure it depresses me and I'm sure it depresses a lot of people.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Can you tell me, Anthony Marquise? I'm sorry? Thank you.
I know, but can you tell me?
With that? No, I can't help you with that. I'm sorry. You have to go to voter registration in Lackawanna County Courthouse and ask them.
County, okay.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, I just want to start off by saying hello. Hello, Jessica. Hello, Gerald. That's your name? How you doing? I saw you guys the other night. And I also want to say like, I didn't come here to attack anyone. You know what I'm saying? At the end of the day, they need our help from the community. They need our solutions. They need our ideas to help them lead in a better manner. So I'm not going to come up here and attack you guys. I know you guys possibly do your best. It's a shame that we don't have any belief in our government or our system. We have people who want to tear down the president's, the president's, what, his sign or something like that? You want to tear down a president's sign? This is his city. He was born in the city. You know what I'm saying? Maybe Biden needs one of us to go up there and speak to him so he can become a better president. So I didn't come up here to attack anyone within our government or our system or anything like that. But what I do want to say is, um, last week, we had a bunch of people speaking on what they say, we have a bunch of gang violence out here or something like that. And we also have a bunch of citizens who do not respect the police. So I came up, I came up with a solution for that. My solution is we have a, we hold a community event, you know what I'm saying? Like maybe like some free food, music, you know what I'm saying, activities, games for the kids and stuff like that. And as you guys already know, like I'm an artist, I'm a speaker, I do all types of things. So I could possibly play a role in that. I could, I could sing, I could dance, I could do whatever, you know what I'm saying? And you could check me out on YouTube just to get familiar with what I do. Because I know sometimes I get up here and I just go, you know what I'm saying? I'm talking fast and it seems like I'm rambling. But you could check me out on YouTube and you could check out, you know, how, what I do, you know what I'm saying? So you could check that out. And I just wanted to come and bring that solution to the table. And I want to say thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. That's all that's on the signing list. Anyone else wish to adjust counsel?
Members of City Council, Tom Coyne Menucha. I wasn't going to address last week at all, but since it was brought up at the beginning of this session as a, as a note, I do want to at least touch upon that it shouldn't be more shred box, more shredders in City Hall. The shredder that they use here is a single-line shredder, which has been outdated for probably fifteen or twenty years because everyone in the industry has gone to at a minimum a crosscut shredder, not a single straight-line shredder. Secondary to that, even my mother's apartment building, the condo that she lives in in Philadelphia, has a shred box. They're supplied by Iron Mountain or another agency. You just throw the papers in there, unshredded, and they are picked up by the certified registered company who sends you certificates they have been destroyed on record. It should not be that the city is shredding documents and then having a city employee transporting those documents, who is obviously not HR, to another location to dispose of them in transit. You get a shred box downstairs or centrally in the office. That's where all the shredding paperwork goes to. It's taken out by a third-party company that's insured and it's done with. That's the reasonable way to do with it. And I was in charge of setting up policies for PHI, for patient health information. I set up Sarbanes-Oxley rules. I set up rules for HIPAA compliance because I was in that industry. I was neck-deep in patient information. When records got pulled out, you went to the record office. There was a logbook. You signed in the logbook that you took it out and why you were taking it out and you had to be part of the authorized group to remove it. When it was returned, it was logged back in. When it went from the offices to storage at Iron Mountain, it was logged in that book itself. All of those records, the entire history, was physically logged. I understand that employee records aren't patient confidential information, but the policy and procedures are the same. And I think it needs to be looked at more of having an independent company actually pick up, shred them and transport them and the city having an insured company verify that they've been done correctly. And I expected that the trash person taking them out, as it was in the newspaper, was going to be blamed. Oh, it wasn't for they grabbed a box that they shouldn't have. I'm sorry, but HR should never have a box out there to be grabbed. It never should have been out of the control of the person who pulled those files. If they were going somewhere, they should have been secured and locked up. They should not have been around for cleaning people to pick up and remove them. That's all that I have to say on that issue for this week. For last week's vote that I did not get a chance to talk about that rocketed through here, the university property. I looked at that because the property itself was set up in there to become a park. When it got tore down, was to become a parking lot. And as far as I know, by the new code, parking, new parking lots aren't allowed in Center City. As a matter of fact, we had a variance for a parking lot that the mayor's office is suing the zoning board because they authorized a parking lot when parking lots aren't supposed to be allowed in Center City. I also have a concern with just because they don't repair it and want to repair it is a reason to tear down a historic building. Does that mean that anyone in the city of Scranton now can buy a historic building? They can say, I own this property, but I don't want to fix it. I don't care that it's historic. I want to turn it and tear it down. Is that how we're going to deal with historic buildings? That when you take ownership of a historic building, instead of saying, fix it or transfer it to someone else? You bought it that way. You own it. You can't take it down. Instead now, do they have the right to just rip down anything that's out there because they don't want to fix it? I understand it's the university. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Virgil Argenta. Last week, you voted on an emergency demolition for the property located at three oh one Mortar Court, University of Scranton property. The hurry-up vote was needed for an emergency demolition to meet the forty-five-day deadline. Supposedly, the building was in a very dangerous and precarious condition. One would have you believe that this building was ready to collapse, as are the many blighted buildings that are destroying our neighborhood and lowering our property value in the city. Did anyone personally tour the building or receive a structural report from a certified third party on this building? I'm sure nobody from City Council has certified in structural building inspections, correct? I don't know what's more troubling, the fact that you voted so quickly to tear down what looks to be from an up-close visual inspection, a perfectly solid building with every aspect intact, or the fact that council was made aware and given this information to vote on the forty-fourth day of the forty-fifth day deadline. Even more troubling is the fact that councilperson Rockchild didn't abstain from voting due to her affiliation with the University of Scranton. We're asking tonight that you reverse your decision and you now allow an expert and a historical society to look further into the structure before demolishing it. Does the university really need three parking spaces that bad? Now, on the issue of the curfew that I asked for two weeks ago, is there any movement on that? We'll wait for that one. Council, I'm sure that your constituents are burning up your phone lines regarding the conditions of the many streets that need to be paved. At least you can share with them that the mayor's street is getting paved this week. If I may ask, the skate park Jackson and Bromley, the building outside lights have been on twenty-four seven every day. Traffic lights at Main and the Expressway are horrific and it's an accident waiting to happen. Can you maybe see if whoever put those lights in could address the lights? Some of the lights just go totally blank with no color whatsoever.
What's the intersection?
It's the Expressway and North Main Avenue, both to the entrance to Kaiser, to the entrance to downtown, and also the exit ramps as well. Thank you.
Mr. Volenberg, will you send that to traffic control?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Vol, oh, sorry, Mr. Schmo. Mr. Volenberg, could we also get the building that he spoke about on Jackson and Bromley? It's near the skate park. Can we find out if that's a city-owned property?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. I was just hoping that you could give us a further update on this, the traffic lights that are going to be installed for eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars. I just read that tonight. If I had read it earlier, I would have looked at the backup information online, but it's not very good reception in here, so I couldn't look it up. So when we get to that resolution, if someone could give us more details as to what three intersections are going to be involved and if those are three intersections that are going to be involved, is that a good time to put up the street signs? And I'm sure they're probably needed. So make it, you know, two for one deal if they could take care of that at that time. Also, I was just looking for a follow-up on some of the issues that I was hoping that I could reach Doris before then and her cutout that she keeps asking about on Colfax Avenue, the cutout for her. If you ever lived in our neighborhood, you'd see Doris out there. Doris walks more than anybody that I know in my neighborhood. She's out there morning, noon, rain, cold, or whatever. I think she deserves to have that cut out so that she, when she's pushing that walker of hers and has to push it up over the curb, you know, you could take that for, we take it for granted because we just step up over the curb. But if someone that has an issue, you know, that's a very serious problem for them. And she's been here several times, you know, talking about the cutout and to no avail. And also the flooding that we have at the corner of Colfax and Olive Street. I did take a picture of it this, yesterday or whatever day we had the storms and the water is just, you know, if you walk through it, it's going to be up over your shoes. And I'm not sure, you know, I thought, I know it was brought up before and someone was supposed to come out and clean it out with one of those digger things. And I don't think that ever happened because it's still flooded up there.
I feel like that, the drain that you're talking about on Colfax is a water company. I think that's in their jurisdiction.
So is that what, does that mean we have to go to them with our concern?
Yeah, I would think so.
I believe we did. Mr. Volenberg?
It's been brought to their attention, but I'll follow up and make sure someone gets out there.
I believe there's, there's two of them tied together. That one and the block afterwards, they all flood at the same time.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure they have a public comment section. If they did, I wouldn't mind going there. And I don't have a concern of talking with anyone. That's going to be for our betterment. And then the final thing that I have to say is that I would be remiss if I did not stand here at this podium and voice my concern over the treatment of Mr. Coyne and his slap on the hand is what it looked like to me from the paper, you know, from what I read. And it just reminded me that in the old days, when the neighbors saw someone doing something wrong and they came to the parents and they told the parents about that issue that their child might have been doing wrong. And the parent was very appreciative that the neighbor came to them to tell them what their child had been doing and they took the appropriate action to correct that child. But in this case, you know, it would have been like that parent turning on the neighbor and saying, you know, and berating that neighbor for advising them about a concern of their child. So that's what I was thinking about as I read it. I thought, you know, he does deserve more than what he, Mr. Coyne deserves more than what the administration, how they treated him. I thought it was very unfair. I thought it was not appreciative and it was something that was benefited against all because I thought, like all of you council members, once a year, we have to, anyone that's on a board has to fill a paper out and that paper has to be sent back in. It's our financial statement, something like that paper. My paper could have been in there since I'm on a board in the city. My paper could have been in there with my name, address, telephone number and everything else on there. So I was doubly concerned after I started to think about it and the way that he was treated. So I just had to voice my concern about Mr. Coyne's treatment. Thank you.
Norma, what was the intersection, the intersection that?
Colfax and Olive Street.
Colfax and Olive? Mr. Volenberg, in five D, we are expanding some handicap ramps and stuff on Cedar Avenue and we're authorizing, well, we're going to look into authorizing the engineer to look at it. Will you ask the city if they can add that, that intersection in to that study or into the engineer to look at it?
I will, and I'll also follow up with DPW.
It's been a few years since we've tried to get this done.
Doris has been asking for that since I've been on council.
So maybe they could
It needs to be addressed.
Address that, as long as they're doing a study on intersections.
I will, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Like my shirt, a word from our sponsor available at Tuxton, Penn Avenue, past the former Times building. Okay. I'm not going to mention anymore about Cousin Tom, but years ago, it's probably like two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, there was a renovation done on City Hall and there was a dumpster back there and it was just chock-full of people that probably went back to the forties. Work records and social security numbers and you name it. Work records and social security numbers and you name it. And it was just tossed there in a dumpster. And, you know, there was a little bit of a hoopole about it, but not much. And, okay, I want to remind you again, there's herrings on the landfill, and I found out that they're shipping bleached out in trucks to special facilities. So, I don't even know if a sewer plant would have the ability with all of the things that people throw into trash and eventually corrode down into the soup. So, something has to be done other than to dump it into Na'od Gorge. Not acceptable. I don't care about their previous osmosis. And I'm watching out for my gas bill once again. Apparently, that was snuck in under the fence, and I'm expecting that that summer gas bill is going to be 250% above what the gas I'm using. So, I'll keep an eye on that and keep it posted. Something needs to be done with these, these utility companies. As we've seen, we got nowhere here with the water company probably, and it's getting worse and worse. The store in Fisker Building was mentioned. Well, that Globe Store was purchased off the county originally during the day I didn't have a car, and I would ride the bus. And I got to know a lot of people, some of them were older, part-timers, and there was a medical billing outfit there. And the Chamber of Commerce sold that building because they emptied it out and moved that company, which was diversified. They changed the name again somewhere. And they changed it and built a tax-exempt up on, up on the mountain there at the Montage. And, of course, a good time was had by all except for us because we lost a quarter of a million dollars a year in taxes. And a lot of those people were just let go because they didn't, they didn't even have cars. They're just retirees that rode to town and could do the job. Okay. A little thing on some of these fancy laws that are coming out, compliments of the Heritage Foundation, a 501(c)(3), which gets donated into the billions of dollars annually. On birth control or pregnancy care, in Texas, women are told to sit in their hot cars with the windows up to mimic sepsis during a miscarriage. In Iowa, torn clothes, facial bruises, lacerations, verified molestation, no morning-after pill. Thanks to the Thumpers. 501(c)(3)'s. They can't be left run things forever. It's a national problem. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Council. This weather is absolutely killing me, and my dog too, I tell you.
Will you say your name for the record, please?
I haven't heard of it. A dog is, his eyes are just as red as mine from the-
Well, I'm sorry. Would you say, just state your name for the record?
It's a little French bulldog, and he's got the-
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council. I realize I've been a thorn in Council's side for many, many years, but I, for one, consider Council the absolute most important voice citizens have. That's, after all my fighting and so on, you still, I still believe that. But apparently, the Times doesn't have any interest in Council, the people of this city, or what is said and accomplished here about people like myself and all these people out here taking time to come down and suggest, complain, whatever. You know, when you give an hour or so in here, it's gone. You can't make it up. Nobody seems to appreciate it in this news media. But Dominic Sadat, he writes one of his racist, anti-Israeli, anti-Jewish letters. They're in the paper, and here comes Chris Kelly with all his, he, Chris Kelly supporting Sadat is a disgrace to the paper and a disgrace to the people of this city, and I can't understand, I can't comprehend why Attorney Falk would even acknowledge knowing him. When this community, or any community, is fortunate enough to have a presidential visit, in our case, this gentleman, he should have been disregarded with the utmost respect. It doesn't matter what our political affiliations or beliefs are, but this, when his visit was here, Mr. Biden's visit was here, 80, 80 people, inappropriate behavior, followed them around town demonstrating, just shows what a bunch of demented simpletons they are to me. And the mayor, when, when President Biden was here showing her back to them, shows what a disgrace in politics she turned out to be for any party. Yeah, that's enough, I guess. But what has happened with this $300,000 low-income house? You know, everybody's avoiding the issue. Is it rented? Is it sold? I'd like to know what happened. I've had some people make comments. Nobody, there hadn't been anything in the paper or-
Ron, is that the one that was up in the Hill Section, up behind?
It's, it seems to me it's going to end up like another con job, like the walkability failure is. I don't know. But I don't have a, I don't have a computer. When my son died, I have his computer, but I just don't have any interest in computers.
Ron, that house that you're talking about?
Yes.
I believe the total price on that was $420,000. It was supposed to be a double house, but it was changed to a single house, and it was rented out, it was leased out to people. It was actually leased out before they had the opening.
What kind of low-income person, family?
I believe it's 30% of your income.
Well, that's who it was made for. That's what people donated money. That's what this city donated money. It was a total waste and con job to me to have a $300,000 and say, "This is a low-income house." I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, City Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Let's talk first and foremost about Mr. Coyne. I'm the last one, Tom. All right, I walked out that Wednesday evening. I also witnessed these boxes, right? I have experience in debt collections and mortgage origination. I know firsthand the importance of private material, private and privileged, under the Equal Credit Opportunity Act and the Fair Credit Reporting Act. I also know that if the City of Scranton does not correct this issue to prevent any breach in a timely manner, you know, unions could get involved. I heard the Clerical Union, head of the Clerical Union here in the City of Scranton, provided a letter simply because they were very concerned, and they have every right to do so. You know, these boxes were out in public, and, you know, at this point, if they don't get any answers, they could go to the Consumer Protection Bureau, Consumer Protection Bureau, CFPB, right? It's set up through the federal government. They will look into it immediately, and they will come to a quick resolution and make sure that everything is fair and accurate. Second thing I want to talk about this evening is the canines. I spoke with the police chief along with the breeder, Shadow Romano, and the trainer at Adams. The main concern with the police chief and our wonderful, amazing canine department, which we also met with, I left there very educated, knowing a lot more than what I knew before, and I could tell you firsthand, they're very intelligent people, and they're working hard on our behalf. The, the main concern with the police chief was the size of the canines, okay? They can't get into some smaller places, and to the police department, it's not practical. So, we left there under the understanding that, you know, hopefully, they will maybe add some more canines in the near future. They could actually order them and have shepherds readily available in a short period of time. You know, with these calls, it's very important that we load up in the right areas. And let me just talk about the police chief as well. In West Grant, we met with him very recently as far as part of a crime watch, and we left there two hours later, again, very educated, very feeling proactive and wanting to make a difference. We had a lot of good people in that room. So, I encourage anybody in any part of the city, if you're looking to make a difference, don't sit on your hands and watch the national news. You know, anybody could do that, and maybe can make a difference, you know, because the federal election's right in our face, right? But when it comes to our things here at home, you know, we get elected officials, it starts at the very bottom with the school district. They're, they're with our kids nine hours out of the day, five days a week, and make very important decisions for us. You know, here at council, it's very important that we have the people in the right positions, and that includes the council president. You know, Mr. Smearle, we've had various and several different issues that we brought up to you over the last, what, six, eight, 10, 12 months, and in return, you're not addressing a lot of them. You know, there's a long laundry list of things, like the union contracts, you know, why should we have to be talking about them a year later? Address these issues. People look to you for support in the time of need, each and every single one of you. Each one of you live in different parts of the city. Do your part, talk to people in your community, and start a crime watch, okay? You know, we're going to be talking about this election a few months after that, we're going to be in the March, and then the elections are shortly after that. Let's pay attention on what's going on here at home, because what's going on here at home needs to change, and needs to change rather quickly. We need to do our part. Let's protect ourselves, our neighbors, and let's help the Scranton Police Department. Again, God bless the Scranton Police Department. Have a good evening.
Anyone else? There's no one else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a few comments. I, too, would like to wish everyone Happy Mother's Day this coming weekend. None of us would be here for one for our mothers, and God knows, they do a tremendous amount to keep us safe and take care of our children and take care of each of us. So, I want to wish all the mothers have a great, happy Mother's Day on Sunday. I also want to acknowledge all the teachers. Teacher Appreciation Day. I've had three children go through the Scranton School District. I'm one of, I'm one of eight who went through the Scranton School District. Got a tremendous education, greatly appreciative of all the, all the great influence that the teachers have had on my life and my children's life. All three of them have gone off to great colleges. One's graduated from Manhattan College, summa cum laude. I have another one at the University of Hartford, 4.0 in architecture, and I have another one going to Thomas Jefferson University to study biology and play golf. The middle one's running cross-country and track up at Hartford, but they went through from kindergarten right through the Scranton School District, and they were influenced by some tremendous teachers. And I know oftentimes, our schools get beat up, and, you know, I understand we have some difficult challenges in our schools, but we have some great students, and we have some great teachers, and all those students are influenced by tremendous educators. So, I want to thank all the teachers, not only just in the Scranton School District, but throughout the state, who do a great job educating our children. A few other things. In terms of streets being paved, well, first of all, street signs, I spoke to the mayor earlier, MAC signs is continuing to work on getting those signs completed so they can be hung throughout the city. Looking forward to getting more and more streets, street signs replaced. I know that Norma's been after that for years, and we continue, it's been a work in progress, but we'll continue to stay on that project. But they're, they're working diligently to get those signs printed and completed and hung. I was thrilled the other day, I mean, thrilled and, I guess, a little frustrated. Meadow Avenue is being paved. They did the first, well, obviously, they, they went through and graded first, and then they put the first monop pavement down. I know everybody gets frustrated because it causes issues trying to get the school, trying to get the work, trying to get the Garrities, but if we want to get our streets paved, sometimes there's going to be some inconveniences, but I'm thrilled. They have the first coat down, and that's going to be completed. That was a really, it's probably one of the most heavily-traveled sections of Scranton between River Street and Music Street, and it was in bad, bad shape. So, I'm thrilled that that project is well on its way, and the first coat is down, that's going to be completed. Hemlock Street, the same thing in South Side, from Meadow Avenue all the way down, I believe, to Pittston Avenue, so that, that's key. And I know they're doing some curb-to-curb patching down on Biden Street, and a few people mentioned some other streets that are being paved throughout the city. It's never enough, but, you know, we're working hard to try to get as many streets paved as possible. Also, he was mentioned about, earlier about the streetlights. So, the streetlights are $623,200 came from the Green Light to Go grant funds, and another, the city match was $348,703.47, and those lights are going on Cedar and Maple, Cedar and Elm, and Greenridge Street in Wyoming- Wyoming Avenue. Also, it was just announced, I believe it's in The Times right now. I know that all of us fought hard against the Pennsylvania American Water Company to try to reduce that rate increase that they wanted. We were all successful, each one of you, our state senator, Marty Flynn, and all of our state reps, Kyle Donahue, Kyle Mullins, Bridget Kozarowski. I know that we fought the hard fight. I know Joe Gilholy was running the office across the street. We got somewhat of a victory, not exactly what we were looking for. The PUC ruling came down today. For water, the Pennsylvania American Water Company sought an increase of $192.2 million. They were only approved for $92,000.6 million. That's a 53% reduction from what they were looking for. I know we all wanted zero. I don't know if that was realistic, but we fought, you know, hard to not have an increase whatsoever. Now, on the wastewater, they sought $4.7 million increase, but they got $11.5 million, which is, that I don't fully understand. You know, they claim that they need to do all these infrastructure increases, yet their profits are through the ceiling. I find that to be extremely frustrating. It's not completely a done deal yet, but the final decision will come down on July 7th. And if this goes through, what I read this evening, the new rates will go into effect August 7th. So, I guess we can continue to hound the PUC with our concerns. As I said, if we did nothing, if we did nothing, it would have been more than double, this increase. But a lot of people fought and fought hard, so we got a 53% reduction in that rate increase. Once again, not thrilled with it, but somewhat of a victory, because if we stood by and did nothing, it would have been a heck of a lot more. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I do have a few comments. Wishing all the mothers out there a Happy Mother's Day, and to follow up with Mr. King, it's good to hear with the reduction that we got, it isn't exactly what we would like, but a lot of hard work went into it. State Senator Marty Flynn, our state representatives, people here in council, and I think it was the citizens here that come into council chambers that were the first ones to bring up going to the PUC to fight this increase. So, although it isn't a zero increase, we got, we gained some ground there. Mr. King also touched on the Green Light Go project. They were grants for those three stoplights. We received the grant awards quite some time ago, so it's nice to see them go out to bid. It is about a 623,000 in grant money that we got, and we have a 300,000 matched by the city to get those lights in. Last week, I asked about the recycling calendar. The original calendar that went out was a six-month calendar, so I got some phone calls about, you know, we're into May, and June is the last month on that calendar. So, I did hear back. We got an update from Jack NIT. The monthly updates for refuse and recycling are published online on the city's website and the e-newsletter and on social media. In addition to those monthly publications, they're going to be sending out a new six-month calendar via the United States Postal Service, and they'll be batched in May and June for arrival in July. So, we should be getting those new calendars in July. They also noted that they received feedback on the design with the previous postcard, and they'll be adjusting for colorblindness. So, that'll be addressed on the new six-month calendar that should be out in July. I had a chance this, last week, to get over to the North Scranton Neighborhood Association. A group of guys from West Scranton went over to speak with them and communicate with them, and one of the things that got brought up was Providence Corners. There was some damage done to the monument there. It's been something I've been wondering as to who originally got the funding for that project, but there was damage to the marble wall. I did reach out to Eileen Cipriani, and she said it was turned into the insurance company, and they're looking to have insurance cover that, or hopeful that insurance could cover that damage to the monument in Providence Square. I did get a couple of calls about 317 North Sumner Ave. So, Mr. Voldenberg, if we could reach out, 317 North Sumner Ave, there was pave cuts on some utility work. There's a large depression in the road, and I'm not sure if it's water or gas, but if we could reach out to see who did the work on-
I will, sir.
-North Sumner, because it will need to be restored. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First, I also would like to wish everyone Happy Mother's Day, especially to my wife, who I'm so happy that I get to have as a partner in motherhood and, you know, raising two children and figuring out our way around that with the newest one. So, Happy Mother's Day, and also Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. I know I've had some incredible teachers in my life, and I don't know where I'd be if I didn't have them, so wanted to say that as well. And just wanted to touch on the issue of the papers that were left out of City Hall. I don't believe that I mentioned it last week, but I wanted to say that I appreciate Mr. Coyne and him, you know, trying very hard to get those papers secured, and think the city should have tried harder to do that themselves so that that situation didn't occur. But now, we've clearly identified gaps in the process in shredding, and I believe that we need to rectify them so that doesn't ever happen again. And I did appreciate the suggestion, too, for shredding bins, like Iron Mountain. I would have assumed that's what we did, because that's what I'm used to as well in healthcare, that I've always had those and, you know, being utilized by Iron Mountain and being taken there. So, I would like us to take a look into the cost of that service, if that's an option for the city or something that could be budgeted in even-
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Okay, thank you. And, let's see, I had an update on 447 Clay Avenue, which there were some student parties, I believe, being held there. So, SPD and Code Enforcement were both notified. There was a quality-of-life ticket issued for that property. It was paid and cleaned up for the quality-of-life issue. So, hopefully, that will be under control for now, but I'd still encourage neighbors in that area, if there are loud disruptive parties, to notify the police so that they can address it. And on the PUC decision, I'm certainly disappointed that we're still going to have a rate increase. We really were fighting for there to be none. I don't believe it's fair that our residents still get an increase on their water and sewage, especially after the increases from the previous year. But we'll keep fighting and staying on top of them and the work that they're doing within the city. Speaking of which, I brought to mind the 1600 block of Myrtle Street. So, Myrtle Street, you know, the entire, many blocks of Myrtle Street, up and down, have been torn up and need to be paved and completed, and so we've been getting updates on that project. However, the one block that was completely paved and done was the 1600 block, and now there's a section of that that has been dug up again, possibly by UGI. So, I wanted to look into which utility company had done that work and when they're going to fix that, because that block is heavily traveled.
I'll find out, Dr. Rothschild.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, just want to bring up about my affiliation with the University of Scranton. I haven't been a student there for 10 years. I benefit in no way from my vote from last week. I don't receive any money from the University of Scranton. I'm not employed there. I was when I was a student. I was in their catering department, but I was employed by Aramark and not by the university, and I really was just in it for the food. So, not really sure why I would have abstained from my vote last week, but just wanted to respond to that, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Okay.
Okay, so-
Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Sure, I got a couple. So, it's no secret, we live in a world or climate where we're advised that if we see something, we say something, right? We're all prompted to do that anymore, and I'm glad, guess what? Mr. Coyne did and got ridiculed for it. It's unacceptable. He's made out to be the bad guy. I'm glad there's an internal investigation, because like I said last week, someone should be held accountable. Doesn't happen very much in this building, in the four-plus years that I've been here. I can only speak on behalf of myself and no one else in this building, but I apologize, Mr. Coyne, the way you were treated. And guess what? It's never too late to admit you're wrong, and it's never too late to apologize. So, secondly, so, Mr. Leonard brought up some great points here. So, last year during the budgetary process, there was a recommendation for two new positions, blight remediation groundskeepers. Thought it was a good idea, right? The majority of complaints we get from all of you is blight, right? So, I thought this would be an easy one. These positions haven't been filled, but I guess I have a better understanding as to why. It doesn't make any sense to me where, or I can't even wrap my head around, the pushback from administration is, you know, well, they have to be in the clerical union. Doesn't make any sense. I haven't, I've yet to see the job descriptions. Maybe they're putting, okay, they might be posted online, or at least the announcement for these positions, but I'm sure every one of them duties would fall under union work from the DPW and not clerical work. And I have the utmost respect for the clerical workers in this building. They work very hard, but, you know, myself being in a union, you never want to lose, potentially lose a body, all right? Because there's a brotherhood, there's union numbers, there's numbers you work by. You never want to lose a union member, a potential one, or one you already have, especially to another union that doesn't even make sense. So, I agree with Mr. Leonard. There's something, there's something isn't jiving here. I would like to look into this. I want the rationale, Mr. Voldenberg, if you can please reach out to administration and ask for the rationale with this, I guess, some type of negotiations that are going on for these two hires that we voted on, put in the budget, and we desperately need, all right? But I don't understand, and I can't wrap my head around, why would they be put in a clerical union? This is some tactic that I just don't agree with. If you could please do that for me.
I will, sir.
Thank you. So, last week, and I brought this up a couple of times, but last week I brought it up again. And because, guess what? It's roof season and it's gutter season. This happened last year, where, you know, on the weekends, and, you know, I've heard just on the street that if you want to get a roof done or gutters done on the weekend, you do it on the weekend, because guess what? There's no code enforcement. Guess what? You don't need a permit. Guess what? No one's going to stop you. Well, a couple of residents have approached me in the past couple of weeks. I've actually seen it myself, driving around. I have no authority to stop it, but, so, I posed the question last week and previously that, you know, how do we address this? Is there a way to overlap on the weekends or a schedule? So, I got back the same response I got last time, that housing inspector coverage on the weekend is covered by the Clerical Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, which means they're under negotiations, which is fine. So, the city is currently looking, or currently participating in contract negotiations with the clerical union. So, I hope that's addressed in the new contract, because we're losing, and it's not fair to the contractors that do the right thing and get the permits, follow the rules. It's not fair to them that this is happening on the weekends. So, I'm glad, and I'm hopeful that that occurs. So, I'm also asking for a follow-up. I don't know if we got it, Mr. Voldenberg, on the properties of 1305 Prospect and 523 Cedar, the ones that have, over multiple times, their windows smashed. We didn't get anything back yet?
Nothing back from Code Enforcement or SPD.
All right, so please-
I'll follow up.
Thank you, follow up. And I know you will, and you do a great job. Also, so, at 1145, 1147 St. Anne Street, there is very, very high grass. This has happened over the past two summers. I know that there's an apartment manager, I'm not sure where this person was, but my understanding is, and the neighbors tried to do the right thing. They know this number, they try to call, voice box is full. So, I'm not going to share that number with you, now, Mr. Voldenberg, but could you please put this on Code Enforcement's radar? They're familiar with this property, but they need to remind it that it's still occurring, and I'll share that number with you so they can follow up with that one.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And also, so, you know, there's been a lot of cleanups in the area in the city, which is fantastic, by different groups. They're all doing a great job, but one of them, a person that belongs to one of them, reached out to me because they have an issue. And they're saying that, you know, now they have understanding that, you know, from the curb to the property, that's the responsibility of the homeowner. But they're encountering some curbs, maybe where there's not a house, where there's like sludge or debris that hardens like clay, and then there's either weeds or roots or some garbage under it. And they want to know that, you know, when the street sweepers come around, are them machines powerful enough to remove that as they pass on the streets? And I said, I don't know, but I'll look into it. And also, I know in the past that there's, you know, every year, there's a street sweeping schedule. I think, it might have been on social media last year. I don't really remember seeing it on the city's website, but I could be wrong. But that same resident who was involved with the cleaning, the cleanup with her own little group, would like to know, and so do I, you know, because I'm sure more people are going to ask us, they ask us every year, if we can get, you know, the schedule for this year. I forget how it works, I know it's every other, but maybe for everyone's sake, so we can all remember and, or have something to look at with regards to street sweeping. And if you can please ask if this, that machinery can handle the stuff that I mentioned.
I will, Mr. McCandrick.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McCandrick. Mr. King, did you have something?
Just two real quick things. Can we, Frank, can we check on that castle house? I believe that the judge ruled on it, but just to get an idea what the next steps are. I guess it's supposed to be demoed. Is it scheduled by the city? And if so, when is that scheduled? And the final thing is, even though I'm not a member of the administration, I am a member of City Council, and I, too, I meant to mention this earlier, that I appreciate Mr. Coyne's efforts very, very much. Having been in positions in the past where, you know, having HR directors work for me and knowing full well how confidential all that paperwork is, I appreciate the fact that you stayed there and you were diligent in ensuring that they weren't just going to be left there all night. So, and trust me, everyone on this council is not happy about that occurred, and as a result, there is going to be an investigation by an outside investigator. But I wanted to make sure that you know that I apologize on behalf of the city for you to be treated, I think you were treated poorly, but in fact, you were doing the right thing, and it seems to me like you were treated as if you were doing something wrong. And as far as I'm concerned, you weren't. You did the right thing, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. A few things. Meadowbrook Flood Project, Marie, you asked about that. Attorney Boyd Hughes will advise council this week with an update, so next week, we should have the rest of the information on that. Also, you asked about the downtown Pocket Park. So, I had some information. Scranton Tomorrow planted 10,000 flowers in the park in April. They were funded vice-granted tomorrow. Also, in April, Leslie Collins of Scranton Tomorrow requested a meeting with the administration to review furnishings, garbage cans, appropriate- Tomorrow requested a meeting with the administration to review furnishings, garbage cans, appropriate sign usage, also pet waste bags, and additional aesthetic items. So the organization, they are ready, waiting for a response from the administration on that, and I will let you know what's happening with that. I don't know, someone said there was a ribbon cutting for that. I'm not sure what that is, but I guess we can find out. And we had another request, 3,000 block of Murphy's Court, that we requested patching down there. Mr. Voldenberg, we've requested this multiple times, so we'll find out if they are going to do it.
I'll get a date.
Thank you. Also, when I met with the mayor the other day, I had asked for all of the signs, for all of the parks to have signs put up that city parks close at dusk. We did have a request from a few of the officers that I spoke to, that were on the scene of a fight at a park. And they had requested that we should have signage up at every park. So the administration said signs are being made as we speak. The last thing is, Armed Forces Parade is coming up shortly, so I had asked administration if they would rehang the Armed Forces flags back out in front of City Hall. That's all I have.
5B for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Koharchik Construction, Inc., to perform traffic signal replacement project at three locations within the city of Scranton, for a project total of $873,831.90.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, it's been quite some time since these grants were awarded, so I'm very happy to see that they've been bid out, and I'm waiting to see the new streetlights in these intersections.
Anyone else? Norma, did all your questions get answered about the traffic lights?
No, we're not getting addressed.
Okay. If you wait afterwards, I'll help you with those. All right. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between Lackawanna County and the city of Scranton regarding coordination on certain public safety technology systems.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. On the question, I do have a comment on this. This is the CAD system that the police department uses, also the county and 911 system use. Since we have, our new commissioners have been in office, they have agreed to allow us to participate in this system, which in turn will save our fire department $1,700 a month. And so I'd like to thank our new commissioners for allowing this to happen. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution, amending resolution number 268 of 2023, a resolution entitled authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Barry Isit and Associates to perform a three-year engineering service for an infrastructure project to include amendments to the contract.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I had a few questions about this piece of legislation. I know a few arose during caucus, but this project was bid, it was accepted, and now basically the cost is doubling. My question in caucus was, why isn't this project bid out again, or rebid? The backup says that the amendment's more fiscally responsible, but I don't see how, since the price is basically doubling. I know we talked about it somewhat in caucus, and we said possibly, you know, with the, you know, the costs changing, and maybe expanding this project, it may be more fiscally responsible, but we wanted to get some of those questions answered. And I know Mr. Gobryd has some of the questions that come up in caucus, correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, thank you. But in general, just knowing why this project wasn't rebid. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster.
On the question, I believe since the Barry Isit and Associates, that's a service contract with this company, the reason why the price increased is because we're adding three more blocks, which originally was not included in there. Turns out, we had some extra funding, and we were able to add an additional three more blocks, which is why it increased. So I believe that was the reason for that increase.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 33, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Chaluski Enterprises to perform construction services for the Robinson Park project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 36, 2024, accepting the recommendation of the Scranton City Planning Commission, and appointing Joseph G. Price Esquire to be the solicitor for said commission.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage on item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, filed accounts on number 14, 2024, converting a certain portion of the 600 block of Deacon Street from a one-way street to a two-way street, from 625, 628 Deacon Street to its intersection with Sanderson Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed accounts on number 14, 2024.
This ordinance was taken from the table this evening, and placed in seventh order for a final vote. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.